City of Stevens Point Special Joint Meeting of the Redevelopment Authority, City Plan Commission, and Common Council, recorded October 8th, 2019.
We will call a couple of bodies to order here. We're going to start with the regular or special City of Stevens Point Common Council, and I will do a, oh, the clerk will do a roll call. Nice.
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel is excused. Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson is excused. Slawinski is absent. Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
We have a quorum, so that body is hereby called to order. Next, I will call to order the City Plan Commission with a roll call of Mayor Mike Wiesa is present, Alder Niebone.
Here.
Commissioner Aronson.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppy.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Everyone is present, so that commission is called to order.
I will call the Redevelopment Authority to order Commissioners Barrett.
Here.
Kemeter.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Cooper.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Schlyes.
Here.
Okay, and you have a quorum. All three bodies are hereby called to order. So tonight's presentation is meant to be a presentation of the culmination of everything that we've done so far in regards to the targeted area master plans. These are visions, and this is gathered from all of the community input and staff input that we've taken to date. We have it listed on the agenda as a presentation with possible action, and I will say upfront that I don't expect action from any of these bodies tonight. If you want to, you can make that motion, but I look at this as a presentation of where we are so far and taking some additional input. I foresee Vandewall going back and taking this input tonight and massaging the plan if needed. Then at a later date, we'll have it presented again, and if we have the opportunity and we wish to do so, we can accept that plan at that point. If there's additional changes that need to be made, we'll take that back. This is a living, breathing document similar to everything else that we do. This is not a direction or a recipe where you're going to do step one, and then you're going to do step two, and then you're going to do step three. These are visions of possibilities, and we want to make sure that we get all of the possible input taken before we even accept that. If we don't have a document that we can all get behind, it's not worth anything to us. So again, I look at this as tonight, a presentation and another opportunity for input. So with that, I am going to turn it over. First of all, does anybody have any questions about the process tonight? Okay, then I will turn it over to Vandewall, and we will allow you to present, and then we will take public comment and bring it back to the individual bodies.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, assembled bodies in public. My name's Brian Munson. I am a principal with Vandewall and Associates. Here also with me is Scott Harrington, another principal with the team, and we're glad to be back tonight to present the draft for both the downtown and the Division Street Targeted Area Master Plans. This is a process that we have been working on now, going on almost the better part of a year. It began late last fall. Our first public meetings, we had a public information gathering session back in January where we didn't talk a whole lot. Simply, we phrased a few questions and looked for input from the community as to how each of these areas are unique assets for the community and what things we needed to learn. And a little backdrop on myself, having grown up here, moved away long enough to know that we don't know everything that's on the ground. So that was a very valuable process for us to gather input from people that live the environment on a day-to-day basis. From that meeting, we then had some additional conversations. We had a steering committee formed with members of the public. We had all the representation. We had representation from the downtown, from Division, from the community at large, from corporations such as Century, from the university. So that committee also helped throughout this process to identify and vet comments and information as we received it, so that we could kind of move through this process with some continuous feedback. Having gone through that additional analysis stage, we then developed a series of recommendations for both, and we held public open houses, separate nights, because there's a lot of information in this document for each area. And so we presented to the public both the Division Street and the downtown over the course of the summer, where we gathered additional input. So every recommendation was partnered up with a question and a ranking. We gathered that, analyzed it, and worked through how do we judge where we're going and how do we correct and adjust things that needed to be adjusted. From those meetings, we've spent the better part of the last several months diligently refining and developing the package you see before you tonight. And so we're glad to be here tonight to answer questions, hopefully have a dialogue about the recommendations, because as the mayor mentioned, the worst possible outcome of any planning process is a plan that sits on the shelf. It needs to be a living, breathing document. It has to reflect something that the community can support, because this isn't going to happen overnight. These are all strategic visions that look at these areas not from a lens of what is today, but what could be in the future. And that's not the future tomorrow or next year. It's something that collectively the community will have to work towards over the span of many years with lots of different projects to get to an outcome that changes the dynamic, changes the economic function of some of these areas, supports and enhances opportunity for additional housing, additional businesses, additional community character, and just overall addresses some of the issues that exist today with a goal towards positioning both the downtown and Division Street to function well into the future of the community as the community continues to evolve and address the changing environment that it's in. To start with that exact component is what we wanted to talk to tonight. This is a vision and a strategy. This is very much to do with what is Point want to look like in the next 50 years, and how do we begin to lay the framework to get there? How do we transition from what we have today, work with partnerships throughout our community to reposition or enhance the assets we already have, because there are significant assets in both quarters. And it's not starting from a blank slate. It is building upon the history of the site, the economics of the site, but how do we bring more to the table so that both of these areas continue to serve a vital function within the community? As we said in some of our open houses, the goal is to find ways to elevate the discussion about what these sections of the community are. How do we continue to adapt and respond and attract both capital investment in the terms of people that want to bring their businesses, but also long-term residents that are here today and may be coming tomorrow? How do we adapt these locations to meet what is needed and what will be needed? The other aspect of this, as we said, is this needs a long-term public-private buy-in. This isn't something that is happening, because quite honestly, if the market was going to do this, it already would. So it's an opportunity for the community to say, what do we need? How do we get there? And then how do we develop a roadmap and a vision that will let us step by step incrementally get to that outcome? And it's going to take time. So what were some of the principles that were framed in this plan into both places? The first is resiliency, the idea that one use can't solve everything. We need to adapt both our employment base, our residential base, our educational base on a continuous basis. We're never done evolving in any of those corridors. So the way to make these planning areas resilient into the future is to make sure that we're meeting the needs of today, but anticipating the needs of the tomorrow, and how do we get there? So it's planning for multiple uses throughout each of these quarters. The second is to build on some vibrancy. We have a lot of activity areas downtown and within Division Street, but how do we harness those to create catalytic environments so that new investment will respond to that, so that we have continued opportunities for recreation, for entertainment, and activity centers that both serve the existing population and attract future needs and future residents? The final piece somewhat harkens back to the resiliency, and that is diversity. One size will not fit all, and whether that's business, whether that's housing, whether that's focus, economics, affordability, or price point, all of those pieces have to be looked at from the lens of how do we find ways to integrate things that aren't there today, but not rely on one silver bullet and say, that is the solution. There are going to need to be very complex solutions brought forward over time in each of these areas to address the needs of the community as it continues to evolve. And so we're working to try to find ways to broaden the picture, to make sure that it's inclusive of all of the resident needs, all the business needs, and all the partners' needs within the community, and find ways to put that in motion so that the development of these areas will continue to enhance that. What I'd like to do is kind of walk through very briefly both pieces of the plans, because they're very distinct areas. And we separated these intentionally, because what would work in Division Street may not work in downtown, and the reverse is true. They serve different functions in the community, they have different formats, and they have different assets. So each planning area, while they share common goals, have very particular recommendations for every segment of this. And as I mentioned, as this is a vision plan, this is something that's kind of step one. How, where do we want to go? Future steps are going to address how do we get there on a step-by-step basis, on a project-by-project basis. So this is different than, say, a comprehensive plan, which may touch on every environment, every property, every sidewalk, every little bit of land within an area. What this is trying to do is identify goals, identify catalytic projects, and make recommendations as to how one possible solution could be to work through those issues. Now again, that is one possible solution. There are multiple solutions for all of these properties, and that's really what's going to come as you move into an implementation phase to move beyond setting the vision and stepping down to a project-by-project planning basis. This is intended to be an overarching plan that analyzes the opportunities and recognizes some catalytic projects and tries to knit those together to get the ball moving. But it doesn't intend, should not be taken as a verbatim, this building is three stories in this exact location, because there are a lot of good solutions that could be brought on a project-by-project basis to address those. Having said that, stepping back to Division Street, the first piece we did with both these projects, as I said, was gather input. And some of the things that we heard about Division Street is that it is a key corridor as both a point of entry, a service point for the students at the campus and the neighborhood that surrounds it. It is a community corridor where a lot of people get their first interaction with the community, and so their first entry point into the community, and that it serves a very different function than downtown. Think of it kind of as a living room for the campus and northern section of the community. So some of the big ideas we heard, the idea of drawing campus onto Division Street. Right now, if you go down Division Street, unlike as you interface campus near Old Main, there's a very different environment of how the built form celebrates the fact that we have the great asset of the university one block off of Division Street. They saw opportunities for redevelopment of this corridor. This is a corridor that was positioned back when 51 was 51. It wasn't Business 51, it was the highway. So you see a built environment that really focuses upon vehicular travel, that focuses upon building formats that have kind of left the space somewhat in that the large regional retail destinations no longer are finding all of their homes like they used to on Division Street. They're located out along interchanges throughout the community. So that's a format change that is affecting the mix of retail uses on the street, but isn't necessarily reflecting what could be in the future. There were calls for enhanced bike and pedestrian facilities and components to both address east-west movement and north-south movement through this corridor. And there was a call to redesign the streets that celebrates both a slower traffic speed, but maybe a slightly different aesthetic than one that's predominantly dominated by autos. Having said that, there are three very distinct different character districts, and this planning acknowledges that. If you think of north of Maria, this is much more of a regional serving commercial corridor. The intersection, the cross-section of the street itself is approaching highway cross-section, and the uses are of scale and of service. That is something the community needs. We certainly need places for groceries, for regional employers, and for some regional retail uses. So one of the components of that area was recommending that that be continued in this as a location where that will want to happen, but adapt it to the character of the surrounding neighborhoods, so that it doesn't divide, rather it seeks ways to get those communities back together. And that was in this slide. As you can see, you've got a lot of activity. You've got, again, those regional uses, a more suburban environment north of Maria, and that really largely won't change, because you don't have a street network and a density component at this point that would change that. Could that be revisited in the future? Potentially, but we see that as serving as an important component right now. The center point or the north of the Division Streets, we kind of call the North Division District, and this is what we refer to as that living room. This is the retail that currently serves campus and the adjoining neighborhoods, albeit in a format that doesn't really respond to the kind of neighborhoods that are around it. It's very auto-oriented still, and so a recommendation here would be to transition that over time, project by project, from a more suburban form to a more hybrid urban form, so that you could accommodate some of those uses and infill some of this corridor to knit that neighborhood back together. Not quite as dense as downtown, but certainly not as suburban in nature as north of Fourth. The final piece of the corridor is south of Fourth, and this is what we've called the campus gateway, and this is where the transition really starts to happen in cross-section. And the easiest way to look at it is to approach Division Street southbound at Fourth and continue south. The right-of-way itself has transitioned from 120-foot wide right-of-way down to a fairly narrow 66-foot right-of-way. And that has big implications to what's around it and large impacts. And so what we are recommending in this is to look at that as an important transition. It serves a different function. We've started to transition to where you have residential now, abutting the street, and a mix of some commercial and institutional uses. So it's an opportunity to reevaluate what is that corridor character. There are two key opportunities as we see south of Fourth. The first being bringing the campus back out to Division Street, like we talked about, kind of recreating that Old Main entrance and celebrate the access of Fourth as a key corridor into campus and orient potentially supportive uses around that intersection. But then as you go south, it transitions into a much more community-focused corridor. And so the first recommendation there is the challenge that has existed for property owners is the question of will this right-of-way expand? Our recommendation would be not to, because what you'll end up with is half a right-of-way. There's no way to expand the right-of-way without taking off properties on either the northeast or the west side of the corridor, and that would have drastic implementations, impacts, not just on the homes and the businesses that front on that corridor, but in a character sense, those become orphaned properties, because there's not a usable redevelopment space that could be then used to knit the fabric back together. So we're recommending that you look at that corridor very carefully and evaluate whether there's an opportunity for that corridor to flex potentially in the other direction like you've gone through with Stanley. An analysis of whether that could be a three-lane cross-section is something to pursue. That's outside the scope of this project, and again, it's part of that setting the vision, starting the dialogue. There are going to be multiple steps and studies that have to come out of this for each component of the plan. But looking at that corridor as an opportunity to both enhance the livability of the adjoining properties while accommodating the traffic levels that are there today, and finding if there are opportunities in that cross-section to evaluate what could be done in the future. Pivoting to downtown, again, we started with input. What is downtown for people? Places to shop, places to walk and visit, places that you can get to easily by car, bike, boat, walking, as many different opportunities as you can. Something that celebrates the local heritage and history of the community. Quite honestly, downtown is an asset that could never be replaced in any way, shape, or form. And so it needs to be celebrated, it needs to be protected, and it needs to be enhanced strategically. That's why you see in this planning document, a lot of recommendations about Main Street itself, and that's intentional. We see this as an opportunity to work at the framework around Main Street and bring in compatible uses, compatible redevelopment opportunities where they exist, to support Main Street and enhance Main Street. So some of the things we heard from folks is, of course, housing. There's very little housing, new housing. There's some coming with the Merge project, which is very exciting, and the other properties that are being talked about around downtown. But in terms of opportunities to diversify the types of housing and opportunities for housing within downtown, we see that as a critical support element, because it does support the businesses in downtown. When you've got that captured market, you're much less likely to hop in your car and go to a restaurant if there's one around the corner. You're much more likely to frequent, to activate and utilize the open space environments within downtown and the businesses of downtown. We see this also serving an essential retail and service role, along with employment. There's a surprising number of jobs downtown, and that is something that should be fostered, enhanced, and expanded whenever possible, because much like residents bring activity downtown, the businesses form an important support structure for downtown as well, and it's an opportunity to be part of that community character for employers as an asset to their employees to have access to all the businesses and all the neighborhoods and parks that surround it. We also heard calls about pedestrian and bicycle conflicts, and that's typical. We see this in a lot of downtown communities where the redevelopment pattern over the intervening last 40 years has isolated downtown to some extent. You kind of have a ring of parking that surrounds it. And in fact, by your own parking study, some of those parking lots are woefully underutilized, because they're either in the wrong spot, or they are not accessible to where they need to be. So looking at those as opportunities to break down the circulation barriers and the parking barriers that ring downtown and infill development that's supportive of downtown character and downtown environment, it's an opportunity for the community to look at how it embraces downtown and makes it part of the overall community again. So how do we do that? Well, first off is building upon the downtown. What makes Stevens Point Stevens Point? And most people wouldn't say a Walmart or a business. They would say downtown. They would say the riverfront. And in fact, the history of downtown is extremely unique in terms of how it informs what is downtown. Of course, an old aerial photo speaks to the fact that yes, there actually was a point in point. There used to be a rock with a plaque on it that sat at the end of Main Street right along the waterfront, that celebrated the fact that it's Stevens Point, because there was a grocery store there. That was the spark that led the town. It then grew to the square and downtown spread to the east. But what's happened in the intervening years, as the lumber mills came and went along that riverfrontage, is downtown has somewhat gotten divorced from the waterfront. There's a lot of barriers that happened between downtown and the waterfront. And one of the things that we would recommend, and I think there's a lot of dialogue about, is finding ways to break down that divide, to make downtown accessible easily. We actually had a chance to grab a bite to eat before the meeting here. We're downtown on Main Street, looking at the walkway, going, I wonder how many people know that's a public sidewalk between Chase Bank's building and their tellers. It doesn't embrace that opportunity. It doesn't draw residents that are either in the downtown to the river, or if you're at the river, you've got a pretty good distance to get to if you're when it comes to downtown. Bringing those two elements closer together offer opportunities to support not just the activities along the waterfront, but the activities within downtown. One of the concepts that we've looked at integrates a bunch of different components, and we'll touch on this as we go further, but I would also again like to stress, this is a vision of how one potential development scenario could happen, with the goal of how do we jump downtown from, or it stops at Water Street, bring it back down to the waterfront, so that that activity can transition back and forth in support of each other. One of the other goals we looked at was downtown as home. The idea that downtown can be a vibrant neighborhood in and of itself, but it doesn't have the tools to do that right now. There are some that are coming along with the two projects that have been approved that are yet to break ground, but there are opportunities to broaden that residential base, diversify the housing options, and that's not just saying, hey, let's get more students. There are opportunities and needs for housing within the community for affordable housing, market rate housing, luxury housing, senior housing, and student housing. We see the downtown as an opportunity to offer some pieces that don't exist currently, and that's that interplay between the riverfront and the downtown and what that opens up in terms of opportunities for additional housing. As I said, one of the really key components is retaining and attracting downtown employers as a third support leg for downtown. So we have the river, we have the businesses and the residents. We want to continue to welcome employers as an asset within downtown, whether they're there today and they're thinking about the future, or whether they're looking at downtown as potentially an opportunity to expand or place their business. We need to find ways to make sure that opportunity is recognized and realized within the project. Another component to look at is enhancing civic gathering spaces. There's a great asset of the Pifner Park and the riverfront. How can redevelopment support that? Simple things like looking at the brownfields we have adjacent to our river. The WPS site, which is currently a blighted site, has an opportunity to both introduce new redevelopments and potentially introduce additional expansion of the park. Now, there's different ways that that can be done, but the idea is finding ways to build upon the activities of Pifner Park and bring them to the square and continue to bring them downtown in support of the businesses that are there today. Another critical component is to enhance increments. The fact of the matter is, the city can't pay their way out of it. They can't simply write up a check and expect that they will be able to address all of this by itself. It takes partnerships. It's going to need to find those catalytic projects to build increments within the TIF districts, and then utilize that to build the public infrastructure. It's going to take time, and it's project-by- project based, but leveraging that increment and leveraging additional partnerships becomes a mechanism where communities can expand their opportunity with partnerships to do things that they otherwise wouldn't be able to do by themselves. The final piece of downtown that we're trying to look at is refocus and revise its circulation. The one-way pair system that is on the north side of downtown and the south side of downtown with Center Point and Clark represented the fact that Highway 10 used to go downtown. We all know it doesn't anymore. There is a drastic shift in the need for some of that infrastructure, where the demand may not be there anymore. And so the recommendation is to look at ways to make downtown circulation easier, because if you go by on a one-way street and try to circulate all the way around, you find yourself three, four blocks out of your way before you've actually gotten back to where you wanted to be. By looking at that ring as an opportunity to explore two-way traffic, that could then solve some of those issues, so that those trips can be made much more succinctly and much more directly. They also open up opportunities to take some of that land that was used for right-of-way and otherwise dedicated for other uses, whether that's enhanced aesthetics through street trees and sidewalk treatments, whether it's bike-ped circulation, additional parking downtown. There's a wide range of opportunities, because we have oversized infrastructure that was serving a highway need that's no longer there. The other aspect we see in the downtown is to continue to serve a role as a transit hub. Again, supporting this downtown destination as a key crossover point, so finding ways to expand bus access and amenities in support of that is something that we'd recommend as well. So what does that mean? How does that kind of form into actual physical configurations? And it breaks out into four components. The first being the Main Street opportunities, and that would be Target Area 1, and they're coupled up with the east side with the recently vacated ShopCo site, although discussions about activity in the near term, that is a large parcel, that is a super block that could be divided up, could incorporate additional parking, could incorporate additional housing and additional residential components, but it's going to take a lot of conversation to make that happen. The key piece of that is that is the eastern entry point into downtown, because we recommend that as you continue, if you're traveling west on Main Street, you would then come up into Center Point and enter the downtown. So how do we signal that you can get back to Main Street? How do we signal where you are in the community, and how do we enhance what's there versus currently where you look at the backside of the old ShopCo building and their loading docks? The corollary to that is slipping to the west side. As we previously discussed, the opportunity to bring downtown west of Water Street. Right now, we have the Chase Bank site, which served a purpose at its time, but there used to be a whole wealth of additional community fabric west of Water Street that was all lost in the intervening years. Recreating that and bringing function of downtown back closer to the waterfront, so that if there's an event at Pifner, they can come to downtown without having to feel like they crossed the chasm, is an important component. It also offers opportunity to integrate some housing and some additional business points that might form as a western anchor of downtown. The next target area, we south of downtown, and that's the Civic Campus, that is currently the city hall, the county facilities, the senior center. All of those components that happen offer opportunities to look at each of those critical components. And I know there's a long, ongoing conversation about the future of the county facilities, the city facilities. The point we raise is that through careful reinvestment and redevelopment of these sites, there's efficiencies that could be gained within all of those. Whether they stay or go, there are opportunities to look at those sites as a key growth area for downtown, because there is a lot of inefficient land use as you move south of downtown on Strong's Avenue. So there are opportunities for reinvestment and revitalization that could form both an employment base, a housing base, a civic institutional base, but all being done in the context of supporting downtown and continuing to advance downtown as that crucial seat in the community and the core for a lot of different activities. The third target area is from Clark Street, south on both sides of the river. And again, what we are recommending is to explore opportunities to bring downtown to the water and bring housing to the water in ways that aren't there currently. East of the river, there's a lot of land dedicated to moving Water Street west. That wasn't always how it used to be. It used to actually come up and tee into the square. That was done when the Center Point Drive reconfiguration moved all the regional transportation networks around and reconfigured them. By potentially exploring a shift to move that back to Third Street, it opens up a large parcel that could have that immediate access to the downtown and could have interaction in a way that could be very attractive for residents, very attractive for new businesses, and very attractive for new employers. So there are opportunities to where that the frontage of the Green Circle Trail becomes the front door and the front porch to all of those uses without having to cross the street versus dedicating a large stretch of the riverfront currently to moving cars back and forth. The west side of that corollary is the development west of the bridge, where there are parcels The west side of that corollary is the development west of the bridge where there are parcels that are currently being discussed for new uses. We see that as an opportunity to diversify the housing base predominantly because it serves a very different market. Once you move to the west, the commercial components are very different. And we see that as, again, an opportunity to bring housing in close proximity to the river, which is unique within the downtown area in that there is kind of a divide from where you don't have a lot of housing up along the riverfront, both artifact of the history of the use of the riverfront and also how the development pattern happened. So, we see this site as an opportunity for some additional neighborhoods serving housing and also potentially connecting Sloman Park down to the Green Circle Trail and expanding upon that asset along the riverfront. The final component that we touch on in this project is circulation. As I said, it is a multifaceted issue because there is a lot of surgery done to downtown to accommodate regional traffic. It's an opportunity to go back and look at how we would strategically undo that to create opportunities for redevelopment, reinvestment, and simplification of pedestrian and bicycle movement and vehicular movement so that people can get around, get through, and get to downtown in a much more efficient way than we currently have. So, the plan does touch on a couple of key components. The first being trying to find ways to eliminate the one-way pairs where possible, trying to repurpose that unnecessary road right-of-way, either in support of redevelopment that abuts it or in support of neighborhoods serving connections for pedestrians, and finally aesthetic components. So, we see that as a, as a great opportunity just even looking at the right-of-way and the amount of inefficiency we have for the capacity we have, that can unlock a lot of opportunities throughout downtown to simplify things. The final slide before we open up for comments and questions is, again, illustrating where this is in the spectrum of implementation, and that is step one. This is intended to be a roadmap. It's not intended to be a blueprint that says, "Build exactly as what's shown on each of the plans." We recognize that there are ideas that will come forward that could change and that the implementation schedule is intended to be a living document. So, as a property or an opportunity comes forward that maybe we don't know about today, it can be evaluated in a framework of how does it advance the vision? Should it be moved up, moved down, or further study? So, we see this entire plan as moving into an implementation stage where the community begins to set those priorities, identify specific projects, identify partners, funding, and then move into a phase where you start to see projects happen on a project-by-project basis throughout the downtown and the Division Street quarters. But the goal of this plan is to just kind of set that direction. Where are we headed? The next steps become how do we get there and how do we do it? So, that's a really fast summary of two fairly complex documents. We have seen feedback, of course, and, and we welcome that, and we welcome more feedback tonight. And as the mayor said, the goal tonight is to gather that information because we know that it's going to take everybody in this room and people who aren't even in this room to make things move forward. It's going to take partnerships, it's going to take listening, but it's going to take support by the community to continue to push this along. Because as I said, this is not a process that's going to happen overnight. We don't add water and voila, all the problems are solved. It's going to take effort, it's going to take stubbornness, and it's going to take commitment to move this forward. But that refinement stage is that critical next step, and that becomes the element then that will address the property-by-property questions, the plan-by-plan questions. This, instead, is a vision and a roadmap of where are we headed so that we can then figure out what directions we need to get there.
Thank you very much. So, the way I'd like to do this, if, if that's okay, because we have three different governing bodies, Mr. Munson, I'd ask that you stay up there for just a minute. What I'd like to do is if there are any questions from any of the governing bodies, questions about the presentation, we'd have Mr. Munson answer those questions. Then what I'd like to do is open it up to the public for comments. Once the public comments are exhausted, then bring it back to these three bodies for our comments so they can try and keep this in some organized fashion. I can tell you that before we get started, we have already determined that there are some things in the plan that will need additional work. Director Kramer, are you in here or are you in the overflow room? Director Kramer, I'd ask that you come into this room and kind of summarize. The plan, or sorry, the Parks Commission met and discussed this plan. Their concerns were outlined in a memo that should have been provided to all commissioners and RA members as well as council members, but I would ask Director Kramer to come in and summarize those first in the hopes of maybe addressing some of the issues that people may have here before we even get that far, so nobody's wasting their breath.
Sure, thank you. So, you all, not to regurgitate the whole memo, but ultimately, the Park Commission last, met last week to review some of the primary components that affects the parks. As you can imagine, and my primary duties is to protect the park space. So, there's, there's several components of the plan that, again, very well done, and the Parks Commission commented on those parts of the plan, but primarily, there's a few components that have lasting effects. The, the first one and foremost one is the vacation of Crosby Avenue. As you can imagine, there is a lot of events that take place in that park space, from, from weekly events like City Band, the Lebanon series, to the Cities Riverfront Rendezvous, Art in the Park, the list goes on and on. There's several celebrations at the band shell and the park space itself. Crosby Avenue not, not only serves those park users and those park attractions to bring people to it, let vendors set up, emergency vehicle stage, but it also allows people that maybe have mobility impairments to be able to get down there as well to those spaces throughout the year. In addition, when it's not the, the best weather outside, one of the still prettiest views down in that area is going down that road and being able to look out at the riverfront. So, it, in addition, I guess, is the last point to the Crosby Avenue is we do have the comprehensive outdoor rec plan that calls for acquiring some of that WPS property and then extending West Street. So, the Park Commission endorsed and asked that that be incorporated into this plan in some way, shape, or form, or Crosby Avenue state so that we can continue to have those multiple events that take place and help the people that are down in that area to get in and out of that, that location. And really, the last point to that is that it really serves as a buffer between the public and the private. Again, park property is so important. We're actually underparked acreage for our, our city. So, if, by having that, we, we prevent encroachment. We have multiple park properties throughout the city where we have private right on top of the parks. And, and that's not the worst thing, but if you don't have that clear delineation, a lot of times those private property owners abut the parks and they start to impede into it. We want people using our parks. That's our goal. We want them there, but we don't want them to act like they own it and restrict other people from accessing those locations. To take it a step further in the memo, I outlined the parking. And I know parking is a, is a, is a double-sorted item, right? You have both sides of it. However, with so many events that take place down there, those two parking lots that abut Crosby Avenue by the Art Center as well as right there on Crosby Avenue are the first to fill up. I encourage you all, I'm sure a lot of you have been there, you go on a Wednesday or Thursday or on a weekend, they're, they're full. They just are. We could, people actually want more parking, and you're never going to completely satisfy that event or that, that request. However, the Park Commission asked, and myself as well as staff, that that be incorporated in this new plan before we adopt it, just so that if we're going to take some of these things away, we have a plan in place for what we're going to do going forward. Taking that a step further then, other things that the Park Commission went over is the improvements to the Pifner building and the Crosby Bill, or the Central Company. I, I think there's probably things that can be evaluated, but to Tom, Tom's credit and the Park Commission's credit, a lot of work has gone into that building to get the integrity of it. So, going from that warehouse and industrial feel, removing some of the components, and Tom can speak more to some of the specifics of it, but people love the feel of it. So, while we can probably acknowledge, and I can acknowledge, there may be a chance to improve some of those things, we really have something that we want to protect as well. So, is it cost prohibitive to have that? Park Commission, my input was more, let us, the park plannings, as we go through our park plans and things of that nature, address some of those needs. And between those two buildings is a parking lot. That right now, if you drive by, it's not asphalted. So, we don't have events. It's more natural. It's more park-like. It's really what we're after. If we go to an asphalt, which is mentioned in here, and again, I know it's a vision and it's things that we can plan for in the future. However, my, my park background and what I'd like to see is it's more natural the way it is. So, we'd like to incorporate that if we can. I just would hate to see that be asphalted or called out in this plan so that down the road, we say, "Well, this was our vision. We want to go that direction." So, really, that, that was the part that we mentioned inside of our, the memo for that. Next, and really lastly, was the daily at Moses Creek. Again, the Park Commission, in my feelings, were, there's a lot of information impertains to that before we could really endorse that one way or the other, but it does affect some of the park property as well. And the way it's, it's phrased or way it's laid out is it goes up into some of those areas with Crosby Avenue and the parking lots. So, I guess I'd like to see more information before we said that was going forward. So, I appreciate the opportunity the Park Commission did too, to get to give feedback on that, but really, we've got a great park down there. We've got, we've got a great opportunity, but we don't want to get cut into that. We really don't.
Thank you very much, Director. And hopefully, if anybody else had thoughts on that, know that those are things that we are going to be addressing already, so if that's one of your concerns. Again, thank you, Director. Do any of the alders or Plan Commission members or RA members have questions regarding the presentation for Mr. Munson? Okay, you certainly have a seat. We'll reserve the right to call you back, of course. I would ask that when the speakers come up from the public, that they approach the lectern. You don't need to touch the microphone. Please don't trip over the cords or anything like that. And try and be as succinct as possible with your comments. A couple of minutes, I think, should be appropriate. And we will now open up comments from the public. Trevor, don't be last again. You were first last night. You were first last night. Ma'am, go ahead. Will you approach the lectern? Name an address for the record, please.
Sally Topinka, 732 West River Drive. I've lived on the west side of Stevens Point near Pifner Park for 30 or 32 years, and I've spent a lot of time walking through all those parks downtown. And I would, I think you had a lot of great ideas, but I, my vision would be to do a lot of what you're talking about downtown with the infill and the, making it very little more urban, more apartments for people. But then, I would use the river and maybe however you're going to access that as sort of an oasis from a city that, and not to develop the land along the river as much as the proposal right now suggests. Because of, I, I don't know about you guys, but when you, when you think of the favorite cities you've gone to, there's usually a wonderful, huge park in the center where you can go and sit, and there's shade, and it's quiet, and little kids can see ducks and geese and all of those things. So, I would think the vision could be developing the downtown with this center of kind of tranquility. And I would just think about that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Brown? Citizen Brown?
Evening. Tom Brown, 317 Sixth Avenue. My concern, and I wrote a letter to the mayor that I think you'll get a copy of, but has to do with how ultimately this strategic plan, if and when it's adopted, in whatever form it's adopted in, is used and what kind of official weight is applied to it. Oftentimes, when we adopt a plan of some kind, then when proposals come forward, you know, people will point to the plan and say, "Well, it's in the plan, so it's okay," or "We already said that, that's our policy to go that way." So, the, the presentation, actually, you know, excellent work, really was. And I went back and I, and I reviewed the videos for the, the public meetings and also the Park Commission's meeting last week. And I just want to caution us to not somehow lock ourselves into committing to basically the commercialization of the riverfront without a broad public ability to, to not just submit comments, but really discuss it. I was on the Historic Preservation Design Review Commission in the mid-'80s when all of the changes to downtown happened and the historic districts were created, and Bill Werner built the marine bank on the river through what a lot of people think was a lot of sort of backdoor, under-the-table, strange, public service, city, different owners piecing together enough to make it happen, and suddenly, we had a bank on the riverfront. And I think a lot of people resent that, and it's a sore point. So, doing what's the vision is recommended, I think, could be a great thing depending on how well it's done. And I'm not opposing commercialization of the riverfront. I'm just cautioning us to not somehow, and it might have to do with the language of how things are adopted or how the, the visions or the proposals are presented, that leaves the ability to not go that way and not use that as the excuse for, "Oh, we have to go that way because we, we had a meeting and we said we adopted it, and it says we're going to develop the riverfront, so there we go." So, it's really, I, I just would hope that when this comes up, you know, very few of you may actually be on these bodies when decisions are made to implement a lot of this stuff. But there is some institutional history here that we should be aware of. And big compromises were made with that bank building. The original bank proposal was sitting smack in line with Main Street, and the Art Commission took Bill Werner out and stood on Main Street and said, "Look down the river. What do you see?" And he said, "Nothing." And I said, "Well, you see that thin sliver of blue? That's our river, and we want to keep seeing that, and your building's in the way." And they changed their plan to accommodate it. So, anyway, my concern is not committing ourselves to adopt a policy of commercializing the riverfront. Might be a good idea, but I'd like to leave it a little bit more open. And what I haven't heard, and maybe will be a future discussion, is, yeah, bringing downtown to the riverfront, that's a great idea. That will bring people there, but even vacating that little piece of, of Main Street and expanding the amenities along that walkway, and so even that alone, I think, will make a better connection, a narrowing Water Street and all of that sort of stuff. There is also the possibility of bringing the park to downtown. The reverse of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown sent an email to my office late yesterday. I didn't get a chance to, to get it out to everybody, but I assured him, and I already sent it off to Kyle, to make sure that the people at Vanderwall get this, and we will send it out to all of the committee and commission members tomorrow. It's about a page and a half that expounds on that a little bit further. Anyone else?
Mary Meyer, Edgewater Manor, 1450 Water Street, apartment 302 Stevens Point. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. Please do not adopt the downtown targeted area master plan as it is written. Instead, please, if legally possible, even tonight, if possible, make, please make a motion to change the wording to the effect that Edgewater Manor will remain in its present location and affordable housing apartments building for seniors. I wrote this, this way in case there is, just in case there's any action tonight. If it isn't legally possible to change that wording tonight, please make a motion to postpone passage of the downtown targeted area master plan until such wording can be put into the plan. Here are the reasons why I respectfully request that you make this commitment to keep Edgewater Manor and affordable housing apartment building for seniors in its current location. The seniors are already there. They love it. It's an optional, an optimal location for them. Not that an additional affordable senior building across the street won't be practical, but for those who live at Edgewater or who will live there, it's a much better location than a building across the street. Why? Because we have the beauty of the river, the sunsets, the path, and the flowers, trees, wildlife, and other natural wonders of the waterfront. Much has been written about the health and wellness benefits of seniors being outdoors and in beautiful natural surroundings. Please don't put Edgewater residents at risk of being moved out in order to move others into a new development there. Nip it in the bud if, as soon as possible. If you don't nip this in the bud as soon as possible, those who will want to work for this justice will have to go through days, perhaps weeks or months of anxiety, arduous effort, and time away from family and healthier endeavors because we went through it in 2013, 2014, 2015. In 2015, they approved a $1.5 million loan, so there's no reason to move the seniors out. If you don't, let's see. If you don't nip this in the bud tonight by either approving a plan with the above-mentioned commitment to Edgewater or a postponement of approval of the plan in order to make such a commitment, you will be in effect opening the door for the fulfillment of the agenda of those who want the option of having the Edgewater seniors live in the senior apartment to be built across the street from Edgewater or elsewhere and redeveloping the Edgewater Manor site into something that can, in the words of the plan, be, quote, "Be marketed for high-value residential or employment use, uses that capitalize on the water views." It would be opening the door to those who don't have a commitment to preserving Edgewater and allowing seniors to continue to live there on the river. Many Edgewater residents can hardly walk. Many have walkers. Some can't walk. Please allow 81 units of seniors to be able to enjoy the river view, the riverside courtyard, the water deck, the path, and all without having to cross the street. Here is the first of two problematic sections I see in the plan. Quote, "The city is faced with the issues of whether to extensively renovate or replace Edgewater Manor Senior Apartment Complex and..." Manor Senior Apartment Complex," end quote. If the city wants to extensively renovate or replace Edgewater with city funds, and if by replace Edgewater it's meant, replace it with a new affordable senior apartments building in its present location, then that would be wonderful. But please don't leave the vague wording in the plan that could mean renovating or replacing Edgewater with anything other than an affordable senior apartments building. Or if the city wants Edgewater to continue to be self-sustaining there, then the $1.5 million loan that's already been approved by the council will pay for whatever repairs to the facade or other needs may come up. And I just want to interject here that if Edgewater can continue that, without having to take out any loan, that if Edgewater can continue without having to take out any loan, so much the better. Edgewater residents don't need a new facade. They don't need fancy. They need affordable. And they love the river, and it enhances their lives. Here's the second of the two problematic sections I see in the plan. Quote, "This target area is poised to accommodate new residential growth between the recently approved Affordable Senior Apartment Project on the corner of Third Street and Water Street," and here's the problematic language, "the potential redevelopment of the city-owned Edgewater Manor Senior Housing Complex." It goes on, and here's some more problematic language in that paragraph. Quote, "And if Edgewater Manor is redeveloped, the riverfront site should be marketed for high-value residential or employment uses that capitalize on the water views, Main Street proximity, and Green Circle Trail connectivity." Skipping all the history of all the fights, all the, all we went through in, in those years. But cutting to the end here, "By committing to Edgewater staying on the river, the city provides a vital service, not only to the seniors, but also to their families and other loved ones. By caring about seniors, Stevens Point promotes balanced views, balanced views that make for a better community and a better world." Why aren't there more Edgewater residents here tonight? Because they're vulnerable, elderly people, for whom fighting for themselves is so physically, mentally, and emotionally difficult. It's up to you to stand up and protect them. Stop this train in its tracks before it goes any further. There's a famous quote, "The true meaning of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." I don't want you to just buy some time for Edgewater, where some are going to come back in a year, or two, or five, or ten, and try to do something else with Edgewater. So please, change as soon as possible the wording of the plan to something that demonstrates a commitment that Edgewater Manor will remain in its present location and Affordable Housing Apartment Building for seniors, in step with the Section 8 Housing Choice Program. And please remove any other words that might seem to contradict such a commitment. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mary. And I noticed you had things written down, and probably had more that you wanted to say. I appreciate you cutting it shorter so everybody else can have an opportunity. If you'd like to submit your written comments, you can do so through the clerk's office, and we will make sure that they get distributed to Vandewall and Community Development and all of them.
And to all these people?
Yep.
That would be great. Thank you so very much.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? You, sir, in the back.
Noah Lentz, 440 Fifth Avenue, over in District Four. You know, my wife and I have walked past that, that facility that you just discussed, and we've always remarked that it looked like a wonderful place to spend your golden years. So I understand why you're passionate, and I definitely would support you in that. But otherwise, I actually really love this riverfront connection project. I understand wanting to keep the parks, but I, I think that the project as proposed really makes a balance of, sure, it's adding in some new asphalt, but by getting rid of the road, you've balanced that by adding in new green space. And bringing in the downtown to the riverfront is adding, really, the only thing that I think this city lacks. That commercial waterfront opportunity for restaurants, for places where people actually spend time. If I felt like this plan was really commercializing the waterfront, adding new commerce to the waterfront, I might not support it. But what I see it doing is replacing a commercial use that is frankly wasted. That bank is not something that the public is using more than a short period of time. I don't bank there. I don't spend any time there. I walk past it. I walk through it. It's only in the way, as I go from that park to that downtown area, that were a place filled with restaurants, with a place where you could spend an evening and watch the sunset over the river. I think it would be a very, very positive addition to the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, because I'm going to use that quote, that there's only one thing wrong with Stevens Point. Everything else is perfect. I have a tendency to think that myself. Any additional comments? Ms. Sizer. I can't, I'm, I'm trying not to be informal. It's hard not to call you Joe.
You can call me Joe. It's my name. Joe Sizer, 317 Sixth Avenue. I, too, see many, many good things of, good thinking about, of these areas. Though, something that has been addressed and was mentioned in the talk was just about tree scape and, and allowing for trees in various places along Division, and then certainly, when I look at the plans for the, for Pifner and for the, the downtown area, it, it looks to me like there's not much of an emphasis on the tree scape at all. You know, it's just a, the way the present design, that one proposal, is just very much cement. And, you know, I've been to a lot of cities who have those kind of riverfronts, and I, I just think that that's not better than what we have, that I, I really appreciate our more natural riverfront. But I think what I'd like to suggest at this point, as we go along with this vision, I think that we really have to ask all of our different important committees that deal with these kinds of subjects to start to develop the language that we have to ask these questions about the environment for all, for all of these little parts of the project as we proceed now. I think that we have, at least I heard that it was a hard winter, this past winter, that there were a lot of very bad storms. There was a lot of snow, a lot of ice. There was potential and existence of flooding in various places. And so that there were conditions that maybe are going to get worse. Clearly, our towns are getting hotter, and so shade trees are becoming more and more important, certainly in other areas of the country that I've been visiting. But I know that that's true here, too. I think we really need to think about the, the plant scape in our city in these various places in a very serious way. I want to see big trees. This is a natural area, the natural area here would be for big white pines growing, like we have in Buchholz Park. And I want to see more of them. I want to see them more interspersed in our communities, in our neighborhoods, not just little ornamental trees along our streets. I think that this is something to think about in terms of the long run, about how do we have these big trees? How do we allow for encouraging solar panels on our roof spaces? And some communities do say that you have to put your roof space to be geared toward the sun, so it allows for solar collection. All these kinds of things. This planning needs to be done, that you don't want to then have the big trees in front of that south, south-facing places where you're going to have solar collection. So these are issues that I don't want, I, I would suggest that I think we'll have a better community consistent with our values if we really plan for our trees, and that means even in these, the quarters, as well as interspersed in our neighborhoods. And I really would like us to, you know, as we start to narrow the streets, allow for where we would encourage lots of trees, so that we have some places that are big enough that we could have not just one, you know, lone white pine that with its shallow root system, it is going to fall down when the, when the soil gets saturated, because it needs lots of trees around it to help hold them all up. They're not good trees for just having one lone tree. So, but this is, this is something we can do. And I think that this is something we need to tell our consultants as they're working on the big projects as well as the little projects. It's like, hey, we want trees, and we want a lot of them. So put that in your plans. Help us figure out what some of those standards are for having big trees. And I think that that's a, a feature that we need to really consider for our parks, planning for when the trees go down. I mean, I know, they, sometimes they go down, big trees, and a lot of them. So, so it's not something that is ever done, but I think we would, it would really behoove us to plan for our communities going to, we're known as gateway to the pineries. Well, for heaven's sakes, I think we need some pines. If we're going to be the gateway. And so to continue that, we need to plan for that. And so I hope that that's, I know it's a part of many of your vision already. We really need to, we need to give them the space they need. And that's not an easy thing to do, but, but we can do that.
Thank you very much. Ironically, or maybe coincidentally, I think people are a lot like those white pines. We need each other to stand up. Clerk, I'm going to ask that you, you set a timer for about two, two minutes. I'll take care of that. Not as a, as a guideline, not as a, just as a, kind of a reminder, that there are a lot of people that want to speak tonight. And that was not intended for, for Joe at all. I just want to make sure that we're, Jesus. I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that. So let's, there. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir, you in the back. You look vaguely familiar. I'm going to start this timer right now. For those of you who don't know, this is our former Parks Director, Tom Schrader, who has many years of service with the city.
I'll, I'll keep it way under two minutes.
Gotcha. Then I'm not going to touch it.
I kind of, I, I want to come here to support what the Park Commission has set forward here on the plan. And I would just, an opportunity that might be missed, the corridor heading to the point. The Green Circle is number one trip advisory running along there. You might want to consider a greenway that connects up to Main Street, across Water Street now that you narrowed it, with some signage that says gateway to the Green Circle, gateway to the river. I think that might tie that, the perception would be there, just with some, some easy signage. And instead of so much concrete, more grass, natural, Green Circle connection. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Trevor, you want to get it out of the way?
Trevor Brooks, 601 Washington. So Division Street, Division Street. So really, lots of positives. Overall, very supportive of this master plan. I know there's a lot of public input, and I had some, some feedback as well along the way, which is great. Gateway transition, so the corridor from now the roundabouts, basically North Point down to Fourth, I think. Maria, sorry, Maria. I think there's a slight missed opportunity because it's kind of categorized as a suburban area, because you, I know you're transitioning from highway to city, but the roundabout slows all the motor vehicles down, but then now we're allowing them to speed up again, to then slow them down again when you get south of Maria. It's a really interesting concept, but I think we have a missed opportunity if we don't keep them slowed down, and then anybody can use the corridor more safely all the way throughout. So I think it would help with the transition, especially when businesses want to get closer to the street. So I think that's an opportunity we should look at. I know, in their mention, there's an interest in pushing bikes to Prentice, and I understand that. All I got to do is say one thing, and that's, if you want to ride your bike to, say, I don't know, McDonald's, if you want to ride your bike to what used to be Kmart, if you want to ride your bike to get a haircut, cost cutters, or wherever you're at on that corridor, this plan right now is saying, "You don't belong." I don't think that's right. So I think it should, bicycle facility should be on both sides of the street. I think there's a, a multi-use path plan. But I think we should consider that, because it doesn't make sense. I think Joe stole my thunder with the climate change thoughts of more trees and, oh my gosh, what?
Continue, please.
Not fair. Joe got six minutes. Just kidding. Okay. But what I want to say is, I do think there needs to be a, more of a climate change lens for both of these targeted master plans. I know there's 1.4 under resilience. He says integrate green infrastructure wherever possible, but that doesn't take like a more holistic approach. It doesn't mention trees. Trees are not infrastructure, right? So it's not exactly the same, but there really needs to be a lens in that respect. Because everyone knows there's no such thing as a green parking lot. Anyone seen a green parking lot? Overall, this is a step in the right direction. As far as downtown, Main Street to riverfront connection, yes, that is huge. Love it. I think there still needs to be a better discussion on parking supply, because there is too much, even though we don't understand it fully as a, as a society, as a city, and it's hurting us a lot, supply right now. So if you remove some of the supply to either create more green space, more development, it's going to be a good thing. I, I promise you that. Overall, good stuff. Thank you.
Trevor, between the Pifner Building and Central Company, green parking lot. It's not green this time of the year, though. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir.
Michael Corrigan, 3271 Tulip. I think our city needs some development, but we need to do it smartly. I love our green space. I don't want to see encroachment on, on Pifner at all. Pifner Park is a wonderful, beautiful place, and people do gravitate there. That bank has no business being where it's at. That, that's a terrible, whoever did that, I agree, sir. That was a poor opportunity for the city of Stevens Point to put that there. We've got restaurants that are moving closer to Pifner Park. Father Fats is within two blocks. The opposite, across the street, Chef's Choice. Goose on Main is three, four blocks. There's the Graffiti's is on the corner down on the square. So we do have restaurants that are close. I think Center Point Drive really cuts downtown away from the Pifner Park. You know, people do not have an opportunity to say, geez, how the heck am I going to get over there? Granted, we do have crosswalks, but you're taking your life in your own hands crossing that, because too many people do not watch for pedestrians. Trevor, I'm not in total agree with you about bike lanes on Division Street. I'm a biker, and I myself, I am very conscious of where I belong as a bicyclist. Division Street, I have no business being on Division Street. I always move myself over one or two blocks either side for my own safety sake, and I think, you know, a smart bicyclist is going to take the opportunity to think of the same thing. When you're that close to traffic moving at thirty to thirty-five miles an hour in a twenty-five mile zone, you have no business being on that particular part of the road. Slowing down Division Street, I'm all for that. It is way too fast right now, and I know our police department is taking priority on what is the most important thing to keep our city safe. A lot of times, they're overlooking speeding violations because we got more important things with, with theft, break-ins, burglaries, all of this stuff. But we need to slow down our town. People are driving too fast. Leave five minutes earlier, please, folks. If that's my time, I will.
You can continue if you still have things to say. I just want to use that as a guide.
The property that's across the street from Midstate College, I don't know what the part that's got contamination in it. I think our city needs to find grant writers so we can come in there and have that property cleaned up. That is prime real estate for development. We could have some great, I don't know, four-story apartment buildings or purchase of condominiums, and with green space built around it. Pifner Park does need to have more trees planted. I agree with that. But we have property downtown that is prime real estate, where I think residential area could move in there. The old Clark Station, I mean, that thing has been blighted for, ever since I've lived here for thirty years, and it has, it's, it's nothing. It's just a waste of good property right there. But we need to do some realignment with our, how we move traffic around Center Point Drive. That is such, that's such a cutoff from one of the gems of our city, Pifner Park, all the way up from Pifner Park all the way to Buchholz. I mean, I think people just gravitate to that area all year round. Thank you so much for your time. Please look at these considerations carefully.
Thank you. And just for clarification, we don't currently own that Wisconsin Public Service site, the one that's contaminated. They have been working on cleanup, so they're in the process of doing that. And we also have an agreement in place with Wisconsin Public Service to purchase that once it's clean. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Mary Ann? I'm sorry, Ms. Lyszewski?
Mary Ann Lyszewski, 1209 Wisconsin Street. I have to commit, it's been a while since I've been up here. I have to commend Ms. Meyer for her tireless efforts at supporting our seniors and our Edgewater housing. And without repeating, I agree with her convictions. In this past decade, whenever we hear of discussions regarding housing, nine out of ten of those discussions usually mention three key words. And I was really glad to hear that Mr. Munson referenced those this evening by referring to affordability. to affordability, market, which I'm assuming you mean market rate, and senior housing. Because Edgewater is already built and fills these needs in every way, I think it's very fitting and vital and practical to keep and support Edgewater manner in our future plan and for our future needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the overflow room that wishes to speak? I'll give you a little bit of time to come onto this room, as I ask if there's anyone in this room from the public, again, that wishes to speak. Is it? Okay. I didn't know. Last call on anyone from the public wishing to speak. Do you have a little comment?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, step to the podium or lectern, and this is the time.
All right. I prefaced my comments by saying that, you know, how you use this strategic plan, and what gravity and weight you give to it, really makes a difference in how the city moves forward. I do want to say that I do hope that you do adopt a version of this strategic plan with some changes, or at least leaving some doors open and not locking ourselves into some things. But I really am pleased to see this effort and where it's gotten to. And I really want a strong plan that we can point to and say, yes, this is the vision for our city, and we are going to try and implement it. You know, and not, everybody's going to agree on all the pieces, and some parts of it might not be able to be adopted until there is that public debate. And then, then you make a choice, and you say, okay, yeah, we're going to commercialize the riverfront, or no, we're not, or yes, this, or you know that. But then, put it into public policy and go with it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. And that is the goal. We want to have a document that we're all, we can be behind and have a path to implement. Last call on public comments. Okay, if anybody has any afterthoughts, we'll still be taking comments, send them through the Clerk's Office. Community Development Director, you have another comment, sir?
Sir.
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry.
Trevor.
Michael Corrigan again. I was just up to Wausau today, and, you know, I think a lot of times we look at Wausau and say, gee, I wish we had what they have.
I don't say that.
We don't. We don't. We don't have the riverfront exactly like they do. They've got a big industrial area on the north side that they're utilizing right now, and they're helping these industries move to the west side of town, and they're using this area along the riverfront for prime investment for the community. We don't have that. We've got a park that is a magnet for the community. We can't be thinking about development in a park. You just can't be doing that, because you start putting your foot into that graveyard, so to speak. What's going to, where are we going to go next? We're going to go to another place and say, well, you know, we got a park over here, and we got a business there, and they'd like to grow, let's give them two acres of this park. So, where will it ever end if we get started on this, going down this road? It's not a good idea. Utilize the property across the river. I know there's a property across the river from the paper mill. It's for sale, I noticed. That's a great opportunity for development across the river. I know it's hard for the seniors to look at their apartment there, but also, and I sympathize with you, ma'am, but also the city needs to look at utilization for tax purposes also. People in Stevens Point are already seeing taxes about as high as we really can afford to go. And development in Stevens Point, we can't really go that much further west, because it's swamp. We go east, we're running into the town of Hall. And we're kind of landlocked, Stevens Point. We go south, we're running into Plover. We're seeing Plover get development left and right every day. So, we really got to be careful about whose toes we're stepping on if we're going to, if we're going to utilize the riverfront apartments. We've got to find an alternative for seniors to have an affordable place to live. Across the street, is that out of the question? They're still really close to the riverfront. So, that's a really touchy subject, I know, for all of our elderly persons, and they hear from their constituents, but you've got to take the city as a whole and be able to say, where can Stevens Point move forward in a positive manner, in affecting the least amount of people?
Thank you very much. Okay, so, anybody listening or watching, if you have comments, first of all, the plans are available on our website at StevensPoint.com. If you have comments or wish to offer input, please direct those comments to the city's Community Development Authority Department, Community Development Department, rather, or the Clerk's Office, and we will make sure they get to the appropriate people. So, with that, we will bring it back to the bodies for comments. Let's, go ahead. Alder Morrow?
I thought it was really exciting to see trying to reestablish Moses, try to reestablish Moses Creek. I know that in that part of the city, there's also been a lot of flooding. And I would hope that if that would work out, to be able to help eliminate some of the flood they've had in that area, and to bring that, and to bring that flow back, I think that would really help enhance the city, and also help the city with the flooding we've seen for the past few years.
Thank you. Chairman Schleis, before we go too much further, I would ask your permission to call on members of your committee to try and keep the conversation orderly at least. Alder Jennings?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to take on this myth of encroaching into Pifner Park. I ask people to look closely at Exhibit Four. I think one of the public members correctly stated, this is redeveloping an already developed site.
Mr. Munson, would you be able to bring up that slide, so the people in the audience could see that as well?
So, we're talking about a place where there is a bank that, I agree, never, ever should have been there. There's a giant parking lot. There is a giant road. This is not encroaching into Pifner Park, and it's bringing essential tax base into this, into this area. And so, if it gets more greenery, you know, those are late-stage questions. But even the green space that's along the river, this is the green space that's already there. This is the Riverfront Arts Center right here. There's a building there. There's a sidewalk. There's a pond. This is not encroaching on the Pifner Park.
Okay.
And if anyone wants to correct me on that, please do, because I'm, maybe you're seeing something I'm not.
All right. Commissioner Haines?
Can I ask a question of you, actually? In the Shopko Block section, there are three concepts.
Yep.
Which I really appreciated that, seeing, oh, different ideas. That was very helpful, but you didn't do it anyplace else in the plan? Is there, so why? Because I think for the site that you just had up, it might be helpful to see a greener one, this type, I don't know, something else.
The Shopko Block is unique because of its geography, from one standpoint, it's just the size. And there are a lot of different ways. We started to look at that, there's not one way that is the only way, per se. Because it could be divided north, south, east, west, it could be one block, it could have employment, it could have the extension of Main Street, it could have parking, it could have transit. There's a lot of different variables that will inform the future of that. And that's why, as we started to come up with different ways to address that, we felt it was important to show that there are a lot of alternatives there. If you look west of, and I'll pull this one up, you know, for the example, along the waterfront, here, the framework for streets and development patterns is much more limited. A couple of things we were trying to achieve and explore were, again, the option to expand the park. To be clear, this is looking at options where some of that WPS site could be added into the park. Restructure some of the uses within the park. Again, that's a discussion that will have to happen with the community as a whole. But then also looking at Moses Creek as an opportunity to do a couple of important things. The first is a nod to the history. Again, that's the actual physical point that started everything here. And so, it's almost a shame that we've lost that to history somewhat. But it's not, it's a fairly recent history. We found some pictures from the late 70s, early 80s. In fact, you can see the senior center being built in the corner of it. That illustrate that Moses Creek was still there at that point. So, we're not talking about it's been gone for 100 years. It's our recent history that has removed that component. And we wanted to see if there was an opportunity to recreate that, because, again, what makes Point unique is there is an actual geography and a history within the downtown that we've lost, and could be rediscovered that. The second aspect was looking at that WPS site, and this is a little bit of a, I'll take a brief deflection towards how sometimes this finding ways to make things happen in a unique way. The Moses Creek discussion started off by a conversation with the EPA that said, well, you got a brownfield, but the grant you have, you can't use to do further study. But, hey, we've got this other pool of funds that we thought maybe we could utilize to help explore some issues. Is it feasible, is one of the questions that they could explore through another grant funding source. And it offered an opportunity to do some evaluation of the lands around it at the same time. So, do some things about the brownfield to investigate what's in the ground, what's the current conditions, what are the limitations, so that even if the creek doesn't become feasible, if they come back and say, you know, we can't find a way to make it work, there's a benefit component to that. We do think that that first step of the history and the place and the geography is an important component, but we also felt that it was an opportunity to leverage some federal funds to help address a local site, and potentially move us one step closer down the line to where that could be cleaned up for whatever use, whether that becomes park, whether that becomes residential, commercial, the creek, the street. Having better information about what is on that site will certainly help us, help inform us as we move forward into implementation. So, it seemed like an opportunity to study two things, but do it with a pot of funds that are being brought to the table, as opposed to drawing off the same funds that are often being called on.
Thank you. Commissioner, did that answer your question? Thank you.
Scott Harrington, real quick. Sure. Again, Scott Harrington with Vandewall. The other key reason why there are three in the one area and one in the other is that the Shopko site's an immediate opportunity, right? That built, they're gone, it's for sale, something's going to happen there. And as Brian said, there are a lot of different options. So, in order to kind of, and the staff was getting calls from potential buyers. So, we wanted to kind of, you know, quickly provide some insight into maybe what could happen there, so to help guide those discussions. We realized that the daylighting of the creek, if it ever happens in the reconfiguration, this is a much more longer-term concept, and not something that, you know, is going to happen tomorrow. So, could we do other concepts to illustrate some of the same point? Sure. And if that's something that you all, you know, want to see in the next draft, we could add a couple of different, you know, variations of this. But, just to kind of get back to the heart of your question, like, why three in the one area and one in the other, was really the immediacy of the Shopko site, and wanting to kind of try to flesh out three or four different concepts to help the staff in those discussions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gardner?
Question for Vandewall, is the daylighting of Moses Creek an aesthetic issue, or is Moses Creek actually going to function as Moses Creek? Getting back to Mr. Morrow's comment.
A little of both is the goal. One of the things that the EPA study was going to look at is the base flow conditions of the creek itself. Of course, it is in a pipe, has been historically for a long way, and we're not espousing the need to extend this past Water Street. But, functionally, could it serve what it used to, from a creek standpoint? Functionally, could it serve and assist potentially stormwater, is another component that could be? And then, functionally, how does it work? We don't want to create a situation where we have stagnant water, for example. So, from a base flow standpoint, from a stormwater standpoint, there are engineering components that they were going to be looking at to help address that issue. The aesthetics are another component, because it, again, elongates that Pifner Park frontage. And what we're trying to do is create another gateway to Pifner Park all the way out at Water Street. So, as you come around, if you were westbound on Center Point, again, hopefully get to two ways, but if you're westbound, we want Pifner to have a gateway and an entrance right at that, apologize for that, right at that point, so that, let's see if we can get our screen back, so that it has a presence into that circulation corridor. We also would see that being partnered up with paths, green space, more trees, the extension. The illustrations are not inclusive of everything, and so, we would, we'd see that as an opportunity to marry that open space with potential for development along it, and find ways to where they both support activities and support tax-based growth, activity growth, expansion of the park, and then the environmental function that it used to serve.
Getting back to the function, though, of Moses Creek, it now goes down Wisconsin Street. Those areas have not flooded, to my knowledge, since it was built on Wisconsin Street, which was done back in the early 80s?
Late 70s.
Late 70s. And I don't think that changing the function here is going to significantly affect upstream, because it's functioning now. And so far, it has not been flooding, causing neighborhood flooding since that sewer was opened on Wisconsin Street. So, it's working now, and the areas you were talking about flooding are probably not part of the same water jet. Getting back to the Commissioner Haines' comment, and Alder Jennings', one of the issues I think the Parks Commission was bringing up is the loss of Crosby, meaning there's a loss of public access to the park. Not necessarily, if you look at the plan, maybe geographically, WPS site is what's being occupied by the proposed development, but there's a loss of public access, because the road is gone. And because the road is gone, you cannot drive down there and see the riverfront. I cannot do it in the wintertime and see the riverfront. So, getting back to Plan Commissioner Haines' comment, I would like to see some other concepts developed that has the development that you show, shows the connection of commercial areas across Center Point and Water Street, but also maintains Crosby Avenue in some fashion, that provides a continued public access. And that gets back to, I think, to what Commissioner Haines was talking about, is let's see some multiple developments. And if that requires us to ask for a change order and to expand the contract slightly, this will be it.
And you're referring, at least in part, to some of the things that were outlined in the PDI plan?
Yeah, yes. And I didn't even, I've got a slide of the PDI plan, if you wanted to see it, but we're really not here to talk about that. I think they could massage that and come back with that to us with concepts.
Okay. President Johnson, and then we'll go to Alder Zarzua and Alder Shore.
Okay. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for being late. I had a county board meeting. This is a great document, and there's a lot of work that went into it, and I know there was a lot of public input. I think what we're experiencing now is our opportunity to have the public input that we haven't had yet, as policymakers with the Plan Commission, Redevelopment Authority, and Council. And probably, if we could have done this sooner, and had our, sort of a committee of a hole, 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 the three holes, we probably could have, is it three holes? Yeah.
Makes a what? W-H.
Yeah, it makes, it makes a big hole. So, I think this is, this is a good discussion. We probably should have spent an entire session, couple of hours, doing a committee of a hole like this, to have the strategy discussion, to get to all of the different points. So, this is, the public should know, this is really our first chance to discuss this, because we've been somewhat precluded from attending the public sessions. Saying that, I love, the thing I like best is connecting the riverfront and downtown, and thank you for that. And here's why. I was at an event in Wausau, a meeting, actually, and some of my colleagues up in Marathon County said they had been to Riverfront Rendezvous, and they said they had a great time, and that's wonderful. And then they said it would really be nice if there was someplace to eat nearby. And I said, what do you mean? Because they didn't feel like eating at the food vendors, because they wanted something, you know, they wanted to sit down. And I said, well, where did you go? Well, we hopped back in the car and went to Wausau. And I said, you were a couple hundred feet from the downtown, and their response was, where is the downtown? And this was, and I found out, it was a group of eight people. And I tried to explain, you know, you've got Graffiti's and Father Fats, and it was still Heffes, and all of these opportunities, and you missed them, because you got in your car and drove back to Wausau, because we didn't adequately connect our wonderful riverfront with our really wonderful downtown. So, this, I think that's one of the biggest things. Love the Division Street corridor work. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Zarzua?
I didn't have my hand up, but I'll talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought everybody down there.
I did, I did.
It looked like all three of you did. I apologize.
So, first of all, just as a new Alder, like, I love being a part of this planning and this vision. It's really exciting to see what this could look like. I did express at the Park Commission meeting that I, too, am concerned about vacating Crosby Avenue. Avenue. I understand we have parking downtown and all of that, but for people who do have mobility issues and them being able to access events that are going on in our parks, which typically are free, so that allows everyone in our city to be able to come to those. So at the least, we need access for people to be dropped off closer to those events. And I don't see that opportunity in the plan as it is. Going off of what you were talking about, about not knowing that the downtown is right there, I know in talking with Troy from Graffiti's and the downtown alliance that they have been looking at with having the pier put in downtown, that you can see downtown from that point and trying to work on getting the wayfinding signs so that people are aware that there's a lot more to our city than just the riverfront. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Alder Shore.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you're hearing from all of us and might as well be one more, that better connecting downtown to the waterfront is really important, and thanks for that, as well as many ideas. Alder Zarzua is correct that the discussion in the Parks Commission was very much focused on handicap parking, and Crosby is important for that. It's been said before that we have too much city-owned parking, and I would just sort of add the point that Crosby being the most convenient, and I don't know, you know, how it should maybe be marked for handicap parking for the big events, but it is the most convenient. And I think if we retain that, that maybe we don't need all of the other two lots that are there. I appreciated Joe Seizer's bringing up trees. It's something been on my mind a lot, too. And not just looking down the road, but more immediately, and not just pines. Because, you know, when it comes to the climate challenge, deciduous shade trees are all the more important. And I've asked Director Kramer about the pace at which we plant boulevard trees and found out that the biggest constraint on that is actually the Parks Department's staff size. And, you know, I think as staff positions are being looked at, you know, maybe that planting of more boulevard trees is a good argument maybe for one of the positions being looked at there. And then I would just add, let's see, director designate Kornowski, is that right? I suppose.
Sure. That seems reasonable. Or just Mr. Kornowski.
That, the other piece of that equation, of course, is new developments and, you know, instead of parking minimums, maybe shade tree planting minimums for developments. Just a couple more quick points. I'm with Trevor on how good a candidate North Division is for a road diet. I take Michael Corrigan's point about speeding there and would just add that maybe there's a relationship between not just the speed limit, but, you know, the big fat wide lanes. And I'm not sure with the length that North Division is that, you know, it really needs to be for cars to, I mean, the point you make about, you know, bicycles having no business, I understand that, you know, on Highway 10 and understand it, say, on Post Road or Church, but, you know, that little stretch of North Division, I think maybe bikes or bike users do have business there. So last thing, something recent, just behind North Division, that seems to me kind of out of step or at odds with everything that we're talking about here, and maybe it's not fair because I don't know if anybody's here from the university, but Lot P was done fairly recently. And if I'm right, and I think I am, it's completely fenced off from the back of.
Yes.
Yeah. And so maybe I'm not crazy, that that seems like not really in the spirit of what we're talking about.
When they redesigned that, they closed off, there used to be two or three access points between Lot P and Division Street. When they put up the new fence, they closed that off entirely.
Okay, this is me scratching my head.
Scratch your head even harder on the fence that goes behind all of the businesses on Division Street, with the exception of the little gate by, I believe, Taco Bell.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Okay.
Enough said. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go to you, I want to get everybody else in first. So Commissioner Hoppe.
I just had a few comments as well. The downtown plan, I think, is excellent. Second, third, fourth, a couple people of the connection I think needs to happen. Center Point is so wide and it's, it's, it just, you do lose that sort of downtown and riverfront. And, correct, I mean, I sometimes go by the back of the Chase Bank, and they have a balcony on top, and I go, that would be awesome to have some patio seats up there with a beverage of your choice up there to be able to take advantage of. So yes, that, I don't have any problem with.
Maybe they'll start a customer loyalty program.
Correct, maybe. I heard there was weddings up there at one time, and they used to use that second floor space for that, and that would have been excellent, I think. A wedding hall or something like that would be an excellent use for that. But kind of going to some of the comments, going back to the, primarily Exhibit Three and the Community Gateway District, I guess my only question, or maybe to go bring back to the consultants, is I know on the Plan Commission, we kind of talked about this a little bit as well, that with that Community Gateway District, just outside of what is highlighted in the yellow there, to the east is the Reserve, the University Reserve, Schmickl Reserve, and then to the west is the Sculpture Park. And so I guess, is there any discussion of making connections with those? Because you have an opportunity there with that Community Gateway District. As you discussed, it's more of kind of the suburban area with obviously Century and some of the other big businesses there, but I think there might also be an opportunity that, yes, slowing down maybe traffic there, as was sort of mentioned, maybe a road diet and things like that, as mentioned as well, would offer up an opportunity to make those connections better between the Reserve and the Sculpture Park in that northern area, which I know when we were talking about placemarking and things like that, we were talking about, people didn't want to bring their guests through that part of the area because it's, you know, Taco Bell, and it's the restaurants, and it's the hotels and things like that. But if there was more of an emphasis on making the connection between that West Sculpture Park and the East Reserve, I think that would be a great opportunity for that northern Community Gateway District.
Thank you. Any other comments for the first time? Let's go out of this side. We'll start with Alder Dugan and then Alder Dalton.
I have a quick little response from someone who emailed me about, is it appropriate time to do this?
Okay. Do you have comments of your own?
I do that, too, yes.
Okay. Because we can submit the comments written into the record. If they asked you to read it into the record.
I told her I would, and she, instead.
Then take a moment to do that, then, please.
I will do that. It's very short. This is from Nancy Thorson, Trader Avenue in Stevens Point. She says, please do not support the proposed downtown targeted master plan with apartments being built that would close Crosby Avenue and use up all the parking space that gets used for Pifner and Banshell events. I have been director and now volunteer at Riverfront Arts Center for over 10 years. We need to keep and even add to open park areas as our population increases. Plan future growth for all. Apartments across from Midstate are a good start. Other areas would be around old travel guard space, ShopCo area, Vetter Manufacturing, behind the post office, et cetera. But please don't let the targeted downtown plan go through into the park, is what she's saying, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then a couple of my own comments. And I too really appreciate the Division Street Targeted Area Master Plan. I don't have any, well, bikes and pedestrians and more safety for them, I would support. But in general, I really like what you've offered us at this point for the Division Street area. Downtown, I have a few concerns, although I like a lot of what you're doing there, too, what you've presented to us. The transportation improvements are excellent. The two-way streets, I've been hoping for that for years. Parking ramps, we've been trying to get that for years. We've had a number of downtown studies before, then you've probably seen them. The development of the ShopCo area, as others have spoken about, looks like an excellent opportunity. My concerns are some that have already been expressed, and they're particularly environmental, I think. I'm concerned about the amount of hard surface, the impermeable surface that we would get with a lot of this development. I too, like some, consider Pifner Park as a kind of oasis. It's a beautiful green space, right next to the river. It's a place where I go for serenity, to be in nature for a little while, in the green and next to the water. And people walk there a good deal. They sit to gaze at the river, they're on the path. I would hate to see it developed a great deal. And I have to say, it does appear, some of your plan does appear to be a commercialization of the river. Chase Bank was enough. We could keep that building and then, you know, make something out of it. But I'm concerned about the, it doesn't, some of the development doesn't complement the historic part of our town, the character of our downtown, which is generally human-scaled. But with the, with the plan that you present, we would have an awful lot of big stories, you know, four or five, maybe even, stories, particularly for the residential areas, and maybe a hotel or two. I'm not in favor of that, but there are many things I am in favor of, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Alder Dalton.
All right. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. One of the first things, I appreciate you guys saying, using the language that we need to consider formal adoption of a TIF policy. That's something that I also have agreed with. And if we're going to be working out pay-as-you-go agreements, that's great on one level, but I think if we're looking at welcoming in developers, we need to welcome them in with our standards at the forefront and asking more of them when they're going to work with us. I think, I think for the parks development in the downtown, the winter utilization that was brought up is great, and I think for the mental and physical health of our community, that's a great idea for year-round use of those parks. And similarly to a lot of the comments that I've made about the blurring of commercializing and private and public development, I think what you can only hear in a snapshot from two, six to nine sessions on evenings is from a certain part of the population, as well as the business leaders, okay? They're not, they're not the 50% of the population who's asset limited and income constrained, and that's 50% of the households in this community.
Fifty-four.
And so they're not able necessarily to participate in situations like that or in these meetings, and maybe they can submit online. But the more that we create fences, the more that we create space that says, this isn't for you. And so right now, I think one of the most beautiful things about Pifner is there isn't a fence there where it says, do I need to transact here? Do I need to spend money? And that is something that needs to be carefully considered. And I think, obviously, that's within our role for zoning, building code, you know, if we're going to have restaurants build fences around their cafes. So I think that's something that also I have some concerns about. And then further on the South Riverfront, which is within my district and obviously Edgewater Manor, I think there's been a lot of lack of communication with the Edgewater Manor residents, and I've strived to kind of bridge some of that gap. They invite me over monthly to bring up concerns. And so I really appreciate that short-term priority is an Edgewater plan because my conversations with the previous Director of Economic Development was that was it going to be on the September agenda? September has come and gone, and that hasn't been a part of it. I know there's some juggling of which vision comes first, a plan and the finances, and so lack of a plan for the Edgewater. I have some concerns with the language used throughout this document. And so I'm going to propose an amendment to the document. I have copies. It's a simple deletion, and I don't think Brian and Scott can promise me legally that they're going to delete this, so I'm going to propose it as an amendment to the plan, and I'll pass it out.
Okay, Alder, you don't need to make an amendment because unless we're going to adopt something, you can put it as a suggestion.
I'll sleep better at night knowing that I can propose this as amendment or deletion.
Okay.
I know that we're not, but we are allowed to take action, and so this is within my role.
Okay. Alder, we could probably pass those out if you wanted to read that so the, everybody else can.
Yeah, we can pass them down.
Of course, I didn't get one.
The simple amendment on Agenda Packet, page 57, under Section 3 of the South Riverfront, is deleting the word, "Between the recently approved affordable senior apartment projects and the potential," deleting the words, "and the potential redevelopment of the city-owned Edgewater senior housing complex." The next sentence goes on to say, "Several lots on the former Weber tackle block also have significant resident, residential infill potential," and it continues, which I'm asking to be deleted, "And if Edgewater Manor has redeveloped the riverfront, site should be marketed for high-value residential or employment uses that capitalize on water views, Main Street proximity, and Green Circle Trail connectivity." And I think from my constituency, there is no desire or interest, and I think many of the community members brought it up here today, to trade out an affordable senior citizen residential opportunity for a high-value residential or employment opportunity.
Okay. So the motion by Alder Dalton is to amend. Alder, is it your intention to have the Plan Commission review this and have the Redevelopment Authority review this as well?
Sure. We're all here.
Okay. So we'll start with the City Council. And do we have a second for the amendment? Second by Alder Dugan. Discussion on the amendment? Alder Jennings.
All right. I have huge concerns about this. With all due respect, Alder Dalton, because of when you were elected, you're not going to be privy to the considerable discussion that has happened on this previously and some of it in closed session. So to insert this now without knowing the full scope of everything that has been discussed over a long, over two years or more is, I'll use the word, dangerous because there's huge things going on with this. Perhaps the President can elaborate in some way.
Absolutely. Go ahead. If you're done, Alder.
Yes. And I'm trying to remember what was in closed session and what wasn't, but I think the point, so I'll try to be in general, is I cannot support this simply because of some of the things that we know are going on. The building has significant challenges, the least of which is including the infrastructure, the iron, steel infrastructure, which is being degraded because of the facade moving away. So its ability to stand upright could come in question at some point into the future. And the bid that came in, and I think we'll be, we would be happy to accept that bid now because it's going to be much more, because construction companies are busy and the tariffs have come into play. And I think what this plan does is allow that flexibility with a recommendation that we consider how to use that space. It's not a requirement that we use that space. I think it's important to have the flexibility into the future because we're going to, this council or whomever sits here.
council, or whomever sits here, is gonna be faced with real challenges as it relates to Edgewater, and our commitment to senior housing and where it happens, so...
Thank you. Because this is an action item recused to the council, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. I understand that nobody has seen this proposal before, two minutes ago. There was clearly some thought, because it's written out, so if anybody needs this reread from the public who wishes to comment on that, we would certainly be able to do that. Are there any comments from the public? Mary, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Meyer? Do you need the proposal reread, or are you familiar with it?
The one that Alder Person Polly said?
Yes.
Yeah. No, I'm all for this.
So, you're familiar with this already?
Well, I heard it as she read it.
Okay.
And I'm familiar with the clauses that she's referring to. Many people haven't known that the monies that were used to create the Housing Trust Fund were all from Edgewater Manor.
Actually, Mary, you have a reply already written out for this?
No, I'm responding. I'm making public comment.
And I understand that, but it appears you're reading. I'm just trying to get an understanding of...
Yes, no, I'm reading what I didn't read before.
Gotcha. Thank you.
According to, so as I was saying, many people haven't known that the monies that were used to create the Housing Trust Fund were all from Edgewater Manor. According to the former Executive Director of the Stevens Point Housing Authority, about in 1991, 1.6 million of Edgewater's residual receipts, AKA profits, from its first 12 years, were used to create the Housing Trust Fund. Not too much later, probably in 1992, proceeds from the refinancing of the debt that originally built Edgewater Manor were added to the Housing Trust Fund principal. That amount was about 1.5 million. The totals of those two figures is 3.1 million. No long-term provisions were made for Edgewater. Edgewater is basically self-sufficient, and just so you know, Edgewater doesn't need help from the federal government. It's not a shame that the earlier federal voucher program was discontinued, because the current Housing Choice voucher program is much better for seniors. But given that no long-term provisions were made for Edgewater early on, it may need the 1.5 million loan that's already been approved. Please appreciate all that Edgewater Manor has meant and still means to the city. In June 2013, the Common Council voted not to sell Edgewater. It had all started when the same people who pushed for Edgewater's money to be used for the Housing Trust Fund had wanted to have Edgewater sold, and those proceeds added to that other city fund. Area residents asked the Common Council to keep Edgewater in the city, so that it would have the best chance of remaining what it is, a uniquely enjoyable yet affordable senior apartment building. They worked hard, because though not every city owns and operates an affordable housing building for seniors, Stevens Point can be proud to. The city does own other properties, what a great service Edgewater is to its community. In October 2014, the Common Council voted again not to sell Edgewater. Area residents had pointed out that Edgewater Manor is about people, and that Stevens Point became a landlord to provide a service to its people, a service from which can best be preserved only by a city where its representatives listen to its citizens. Stevens Point residents knew that a private entity with an eye more on profit than on people would likely raise the rent beyond voucher limits, because it could. After the 2014 council vote, the lawyer of the company that had bid to purchase Edgewater in both 2013 and 2014 admitted to me that they would have increased the rent beyond voucher limits. In October 2015, the Common Council voted to approve a $1.5 million loan for Edgewater rather than sell or otherwise dispose of Edgewater. Concerned citizens had to counter various kinds of misinformation, such as that there just aren't enough seniors in the area to keep Edgewater filled. They present statistics showing that there is and will be a continued need and a demand for affordable units for the aging population. Another popular bit of misinformation was that Edgewater couldn't be filled or marketable without costly renovations. The tenants knew that the best way to keep Edgewater out of jeopardy was to fill Edgewater with seniors before renovations, thereby proving that Edgewater was fillable without costly improvements. Candlewood and the tenants lowered the vacancy rate from 35% as of January 1, 2014, to virtually no vacancies. They did that chiefly by writing a letter to the editor every week for, I think, I think it was seven months, letting people know that they loved Edgewater with its big, beautiful Riverfront backyard. They collected thousands of signatures, including ones from every district, of people who stepped up eagerly to sign, to say that they wanted Edgewater to remain what it was, and that they wanted the approval of a $1.5 million loan for the facade and other necessities that might present. Area citizens worked so hard that Edgewater would not be disposed of, and so that a larger loan would not be approved, one that would be more than Edgewater could easily afford to pay back. Why? So that Edgewater could stay affordable and step with the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program, so that Edgewater can continue to be self-sufficient and provide this much-needed service for seniors. Many Edgewater residents have only their social security or their low income to live on. That is, many of them live on less than 800 a month. Edgewater meets a real and ongoing need. Even if another affordable senior building is built at Third and Water, that will just help meet the need for affordable senior housing. It will not replace the need for Edgewater. In short, in the short time that I have to talk to you tonight, I could tell you only about some of the struggles that Edgewater and other area residents have been through. The seniors shouldn't have to work to stay in their home a fourth time. The seniors shouldn't have to work to stay in their home a fourth time. Please don't make them do that. Somebody mentioned here that she, Polly, doesn't know, Alder Person Dalton, doesn't know what's been discussed for the last two years. None of you, hardly, some of you may not know what has been going on all these many years. There shouldn't have been discussions. We already fought and won three times, and we tried to show that it is the will of the people. We've presented the will of the people to all the bodies that had control of Edgewater over the years here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Meyer.
Thank you.
Alder Schor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mary, for the, both of those presentations. I agree with a lot of what you presented, and in fact, my introduction to the issue, if I'm remembering right, was when you got to my door a couple blocks away in 2015. And I agree that this shouldn't have to be fought a fourth time. You mentioned in your earlier presentation, time spans, you know, timeframes, and I think that's where the issue comes, because I do agree that this shouldn't have to be fought a fourth time. I do agree that this should be, you know, preserved and kept in place for the coming When you talk about a longer time horizon, though, I think that's where the consensus does start to break down a bit, and start to not be as broad and strong, because the some of these factors, we just, we have to take into account. One is the new development at Third and Water, and another is the price tag of the fixes, and if everything that had to be done could be done at the price you mentioned, you know, we'd have a fairly easy time with this. But, you know, when the issue is sort of set up, not on that, you know, coming-years timeframe, but more of that commitment for years and years and years, and then I think that's something that we, well, that I can't do, anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments? To Alder Person Niebo.
Yeah, I agree with President Johnson. I think we need to keep this flexible for the city, and it doesn't say when, it says if. It does say several lots have significant residential infill potential. They absolutely do. And if Edgewater Manor is redeveloped, it doesn't say when, it says if. We need to keep our flexibility in place, and I don't think we should be taking anything off the table at this point. I think at some point down the line, for the sake of our tax base, we may need to relook at that. I voted to keep Edgewater Manor back in 2015, and to preserve the housing for the seniors. The reality is, the building could get to the point where we can't afford, as a city, to pay for it. We don't want to cut off any option now.
Thank you.
Not saying that we should, but...
Any other Alders, oh, I'm sorry. Any other Alders that haven't spoken on this item yet? Okay, back to Alder Dalton.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to speak, and first, I don't, I take a bit of offense to this situation, that I haven't done my homework as the newest, because I have met with the former director and the treasurer extensively about this particular, and I have been brought up to speed, as they say, on the history of the project and the closed-session meetings and the information needed to make informed decisions about this. Secondly, while I bet Brian and Scott would appreciate the discussion of this outside of their meeting time, to dive into the fact that the reason this is a difficult issue is that we had an outlandish bid in the past, and to just articulate one example of how outlandish it was, a commercial contractor said, "To replace 100 doors in this building, it would cost $5,000 per door." I just had a commercial door installed at a development project I'm doing. It was $325 for labor, $1,500 for a much more extensive door that would be done within the residential facilities here. So, from right there, you can, and he said he'd be willing to give us a deal for 100 doors. So, to go right there from $500,000 to $150,000, just save the city $350,000 on that bid, by being a responsible bidder and asking for the projects that need to be done. And I think, I'd like to hear from Brian and Scott, if they've had a chance to look at the language here, that I don't believe that the deletion of this language really substantially affects the vision. It just doesn't also particularly call out that if this is development, and that's the opening clause, but if the Edgewater is development, the second phrase there says, "It should be marketed," and "should" is a pretty strong legal term, so "should be marketed for high value" does actually bind us to more than we might be interested in, and is not a vision that I share.
Okay. First of all, for clarification, even if this plan is adopted tonight, or whenever this plan is adopted, that does not bind us to anything. So, I want to be very clear on that. If anyone from Vandewall wishes to comment, you certainly can. You can also not, if you choose to do so, because I understand this is way outside your scope of work that we contracted you for. So, I see a look of discomfort, so I'm not gonna ask you to respond to that. Any other comments from the Alders? Okay, if you are in favor of the amendment, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the amendment, you will vote no, and we'll have the clerk call the roll, please.
Moral?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Dalton?
Yes.
Dugan?
Yes.
Niebo?
No.
Johnson?
Yeah, sorry. No. It's late. I'm sorry.
Zirazua?
No.
Schor?
No.
Jennings?
No.
Two, seven fails.
Seven, two. The motion fails. As a representative and chair of the Plan Commission, is there any member of the Plan Commission that wishes to take this up for a vote? Seeing none, I will turn it over to the Chair of the Redevelopment Authority.
No action.
Okay. And we're good there. Any other Alders that wish to make comments on the presentation for the first time? Let's go to Mr. Kemeter. Sorry, I didn't mean Alders, I meant any of the bodies. I apologize, my fault.
I'm wondering why you wanna, you're changing, when this, when Center Point, when Center Point Place was built, constructed, Center Point Drive, they connected it onto First Street, and then connected it to Clark, and they changed the extension of Water Street to Third Street. So, you have a jog in Third Street now. Why you didn't consider changing that back to First Street and keeping and changing Water back to where it had been historically?
Sure. Yeah, as you mentioned, Water Street used to come up from the south and tee into the square, effectively. And what we were looking to try to do with that movement wasn't simply just a traffic shift, but to look at an opportunity, you can see in this graphic, for this block, basically at the southwest corner of Third, now, there's some historic structures that would be kind of excluded intentionally, and could be, would be evaluated, but the thought is, you could create an opportunity either for additional employment, additional housing, or additional retail development, where currently Water occupies that frontage. And so, the concept here was trying to unlock some additional infill, and again, in a parking lot that gets some event use, potentially needs to be evaluated as the parking lot on Third gets changed, to see how that, how much that is utilized, and whether there needs to be some parking components there. But, the thought is to try to unlock some of that property, to have additional waterfront frontage, that would have the Greenway Circle as that front gate, rather than Water Street as it comes around to the west. So, it was looking for ways to create opportunities for additional waterfront development. It could come to Second, but that limits how much land could potentially be incorporated into that, and that was why we looked at that Third as a potential pivot. The other aspect is, you look at the redevelopment that's happening already on Third, with the momentum that's happening with the coffee shop, the project on Third Avenue, Father Fats, and all of those elements that lead up to that intersection in downtown, that seemed like a logical point, where you start to create some momentum to bring downtown to the south, and pivot, and connect over to the river as well.
Does that answer your question?
Not really.
Okay, but it is an answer. You can admit that, right? Anyone else wishing to comment for the first time? Chairman Schleis.
My concern is with the Division Street property. This plan seems to contradict itself. On one hand, it's saying, "We want to get additional development, we want to bring in the big-name box stores," and on the other hand, "We're going to reduce the number of driveways, we're gonna reduce the number of lanes, and we're gonna screw up the traffic all over." There is a lot of traffic on that, on this corridor. In case anybody didn't notice, there's a superhighway being finished off to the south of us. Why is that created, that big, superhighway? To bring more traffic. And if you bring the traffic down, you're gonna start making a bottleneck. And when you get a bottleneck, traffic is gonna go elsewhere. The traffic will not go past the businesses. Businesses will suffer, businesses will go out of business, we will not have that tax base. Any business wanting to come in, they ask, "What's the traffic count?" Because if you're not seen, you're not gonna get the business. We cannot keep jumping back and forth. This has been a commercial corridor. Commercial businesses provide employment to this city, they pay a lot more taxes than residential, and we've got to take in consideration our business responsibility for trying to develop this. I mean, if traffic will move, it will affect businesses all the way down south to the south-city limits. And what's gonna happen? You get traffic jams, you get block jams, people says, "I am not gonna wait and go through there, I'm gonna go elsewhere." They can move that same traffic over to Highway 10, where we have a huge problem right now, or it can move it to 66 and create a problem. If we do this smart, we can get to business development, we can keep the traffic moving with probably some minimal adjustments, but we can't go to school and shrink it down to nothing and expect to have development maintain or grow in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Okay, Alder Jennings, I know you've been patiently waiting. Go ahead.
I just wanted to throw out an idea with Crosby, and I imagine this was maybe thought about, but, and maybe this addresses both issues, but turning Crosby into a more of a walkway, like a State Street, that can be utilized for traffic and parking when necessary, but otherwise, it has bollards at the end, and it's just for walking. I don't know what the access point would be, but it might allow both things, depending on circumstances. Just a thought.
Absolutely, if you need to...
Certainly.
Oh, and can I say one more thing?
Sure.
The idea that people drive down Crosby Street to look at the river, I don't get that, because there's a building, and now the Cultural Commons blocks the view, there's the bandshell, there's a giant toilet, and then there's another building.
There's multiple toilets there.
So, maybe, like, sunset, building, building, sunset, building, building.
I mean, I don't, I don't buy that one, sorry.
And honestly, Alder, I do. I drive down Crosby, but it's also in my neighborhood.
Yeah, it's true. I don't.
As we looked at Crosby and the function that it serves now, certainly it does give access to the park. But we're trying again to weigh competing interests. Because if you look at where you end up in Crosby, it's, for distance from the ban shell, for example, it gives access to vendors. But the intersection of Crosby and Portage, which wouldn't be closed in this scenario, is effectively kind of on the backside of the ban shell, about the same distance. The opportunity to look at Crosby as both, as the removal for Crosby was to do two things. One was to reduce divides between the ban shell area and downtown so that you had more open space connections, path connections, and park space that would flow up to the extension of downtown. The other goal was to try to look at that street as it serves an event function, but it doesn't get a lot of use the balance of the year. When we were down at the park, just for fun, after our meetings this afternoon, we drove over, we're kind of saying, "Well, it's a beautiful night and a fall that we're quickly losing beautiful lights on," you know, and there were people walking, which is great. What we see, the opportunity per Pifner for the WPS site, for the downtown site, is to increase that activity on a yearly basis. By taking Crosby out of that component with the extension of Moses Creek or the daylighting of Moses Creek, taking the acreage that is Crosby and putting it back into the park, seemed like an opportunity to expand the park east of Crosby so that there was a component, if you think of where west, if you sent west-south, all that land that is currently the western edge of WPS, which is on the east side of Crosby, could potentially be folded into the park, which is in the area that needs the most, the land the most, because it's in that functional area in front of the ban shell. We know in the past PDI plan, they talked about rerouting Crosby east, rebuilding it, and then connecting it back to the same spot. The challenge is it brings that same connection back to the most constrained spot in the park. What we looked at was a twofold kind of component. The first was, could you remove Crosby and still preserve access by looking at the properties along the south side of Porter Street? I know past plans that looked further northwest as acquisition points for expansion of the park, but the four houses there could be potentially an opportunity in the long term to recreate that access, recreate that frontage, but actually put that acreage in the spot where it's needed most, where it's most constrained. And at the same time, not spend the money to take Crosby, relocate it east, but bring it back to the pinch point there near the ban shell. Could there be a concept where Crosby connects to west? Possibly. That could achieve some of that separation that was talked about, could achieve some of those components, but it's a different environment for that potential future redevelopment of the parking lot site. It's something we can take a look at. There are certainly different ways to address this. But the concern we saw was the need for more acreage where it's needed most, adjacent to the ban shell. We recognize the balancing act of providing access for people. The parking comment about losing the parking on WPS, we would recommend that actually be relocated to the southern section of that downtown extension where we do have two parking lots on either side of Main Street. Keep those as public lots, they could serve event functions, but at the same time, when there's not an event, they're more strategically placed to serve the downtown. So that if you're parking there, you're walking past a business to go to Pifner Park, or you're walking past, what we saw on the western edge is an opportunity potentially to expand the art museum as a civic function there along the river, or incorporate hotel components or incorporate other uses as a way to create activity that both supports the western edge of downtown, but then pivots and supports and complements the activities to the north. So that includes potentially some public parking in that realm that could accent that lost parking to the north. Again, we see that parking lot as being really underutilized on a day-to-day basis. Yes, it serves an event function, but when we're looking at downtowns, we want to try to be strategic about not just how we deliver parking, but where we deliver parking so that it's serving day-to-day uses or it's directing people and exposing people so that they would know, because they parked right off of Main Street, where Main Street is if they were going to Pifner Park. So we're trying to draw some of those ties together with our infrastructure. The Crosby connection, in or out, is something that certainly we have heard, we understand and recognize the parks' comments, and we'll continue to work with, with staff to address, you know, how that gets resolved, potentially through some additional design work. But that's kind of the thinking that went into the creation of that concept that was put into the plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we've had opportunity to comment. This is not your only opportunity to comment. If something comes to you tonight in a vision or sometime over the next couple of weeks, by all means, get your comments through the clerk's office or through the Community Development Department. I still recommend that we take no action on this tonight, but I will ask, is there anyone on the City Council that wishes to take action?
No.
Okay. And I will ask anyone on the Plan Commission, is there anyone on the Plan Commission that wishes to take action? Chairman, I would ask you do the same.
No action.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to accept the report and place it on file?
I would say no at this point. I would wait till the product is further honed, and we'll have an opportunity to take another look at it in the very near future. Thank you all.
I suggest one thing that we-
Absolutely, Madam President. Hang on, we're not adjourned yet, please.
Yep, the old lady's talking to herself. Sorry.
This, I think, the discussion that happened in meeting with the two other bodies related to this was very helpful, and we may want to consider something like this again to kind of-
We will.
Thank you.
Yes. This will be the format from here on out.
Kyle.
Mr. Kearns.
I thought it beneficial that I comment in that I'm the city's associate planner, and we will be welcoming a new director shortly. It's going to be our responsibility as the city planners to carry out a lot of the recommendations in this plan. And first, I want to make, want to make note that we are very happy with the results. It's been a great pleasure to work with Vanderwall. We have been very excited the way they have engaged the public throughout this entire process, and we are very excited about both of these two plans. And I think we should applaud their efforts throughout this entire process. Again, there are, there are some things in this plan that I think can continue to be worked out, and I think that's for the better. I do not want to implement something that is not backed by the community, is not backed by the Alders, and is not backed by staff and other departments. I think it would be very difficult to do, and we would be spinning our wheels in doing that. So I also want to applaud them in going back and making some of these changes and being willing to come back before these bodies and present another draft. The last thing I want to note is that from an implementation standpoint, you know, this plan is not that. It is a very high-level plan. It's essentially the, the first plan in visioning for a corridor, in this case, is Division Street and the downtown. It is not a strategic plan, it's not a feasibility study. Those things can come out of this plan as additional steps as we move forward, but right now, it is a visionary document, and it will continue to be that as we move forward. But it's very helpful from a planning standpoint to start at this phase and then work towards additional steps in the planning process.
Thank you very much, Kyle, I appreciate that.
Which is why I'm really looking forward to strategic planning.
And thank you, representatives from Vanderwall and Associates, we appreciate your effort on this, along with former Community Development Director Estruski, and Kyle, and everybody in that department. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you adjourn the Redevelopment Authority.
We're adjourned.
And with that, I will adjourn the Plan Commission and the Common Council at 8:50.